All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is the symbol of the United States of America and to uphold the principles that stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you everybody for coming out, we'll start off, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you Ryan.
Second.
Thank you Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, consent agenda, is there any item on there anybody would like to discuss? Not, I would take a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you Ryan.
Second.
Thank you Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, polls, thank you everybody.
I just want to make one note on that.
Yes.
There was a clarification so that for Sarah, that would be grade eight, step four.
Okay.
So, I had updated that in the memo.
Oh, yes. All right, next is visitors to the council, John Wade.
Evening, thank you for having me, my name is John Wade, I'm president of Rochester area economic development. We are partners with Casson and we wanted to take the opportunity to come here and share the work that we are doing jointly. We appreciate very much your involvement, we started this actually with some of your Casson staff, a couple of years ago deciding that we needed to make a greater emphasis outside of just Rochester proper. Because Rochester proper alone can't survive without the forty-five, it's just about fifty thousand people a day who go into the city of Rochester to work. And the neighborhood, as I like to refer to it, is critically important to that community's continued growth and development. We continue to see, we just released a couple of surveys, we released a banking study today that was done by twelve bankers representing billions of dollars worth of investment in the area, while they are cautious and this is going to be published, has it been out today yet? Anyway, it'll be out tonight or tomorrow, we have the results. And we pay a lot of attention to what those banks look at because they're kind of a canary in the mine, they see trends or other things. And they continue to present an optimistic view, we are not underwater on car loans, you know, there's a number of big macro things kind of going on in the marketplace, our banks tend to act very responsibly, we're not seeing a lot of, we watch consumer debt, we like to, you know, look at a lot of those things. That's a very favorable report. When I sit on a, with a group of people in my job, from Greater MSP, the metro area, Duluth, St. Cloud, Mankato, and Rochester, we are by far in the best economic shape of most in the state. And that is, you know, we witnessed billions of dollars worth of development, not only by the healthcare sector, but interestingly enough, in our market, which is the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area, which includes Dodge County, Homestead, Wabashaw, and Fillmore Counties, the legal definition and designation, we continue to see really very, very strong growth. We, through June of this year, we grew 6.7% employment, which is over six thou, about sixty-seven, nearly seven thousand new jobs were created in this MSA, that's remarkable growth. So that's a little over four percent growth, we would like, we believe that we should be around three or four percent optimally. And again, this is as a region, this is as that MSA, the four counties. And that's, that's the economy we pay attention to. So, we continue to have pressures that you're well aware of, although lessening to a certain degree, interestingly, a workforce remains a huge issue, but not as dramatic. Our businesses seem to be able to find the people that they need to grow, there's a lot of technology and other things that are probably assisting that. We continue to see a great deal of pressure on housing, you guys are doing a lot to address that here, and doing everything we can do to address that issue. And much of that marketplace, while it's continued to grow dramatically, has been because of apartment building. And as we bring on all those apartment units, they are, we'll shut ten thousand housing units. So, I mean, think about ten thousand housing units. And, and to keep up with that is very, very challenging, and one of the ways the market has addressed that is through apartments. And that's why we're seeing such tremendous amount of building and development of apartments. So that's a very positive picture today, now things can change tomorrow. But if we could continue to grow for the rest of all of our careers, even you younger people, if we could, if I could take a deal today and say we will grow forever at three to four percent, that would be a very good thing. I don't really want to turn up the, you know, not that I can, but you don't really want to turn up that temperature to six and seven percent because then we can't keep up with it. We don't have the developable land at the same rate, we don't have housing, tremendous pressure on our education system, I also want to thank you guys because Casson continues to be widely recognized as having a great school system.
Oh.
And, yeah. And it's interesting, right, but we talked, we have good CEOs from around the world to come run startup companies, it's a big challenge we have. And when we sit down with those folks, it's interesting, often from pretty well-heeled areas, what do they really want to know about? They want to know that we have the workforce, you know, coming out we have community colleges that are very, very important to doing that, and unions, and other training programs. But one of the things that is very, very important to people is the quality of our school systems. And we are going to, on our website, R A E D I dot com, if you want to look at a lot of data sometime, we are going to add on the area schools achievement as well into that because we have so many people asking about it. Because when people come here, they don't necessarily want to live in Rochester proper, they want to live in the market. And of course, to a lot of people who come here from other places, this is nothing. You know, this kind of drive, which I say, oh, we're at Casson tonight, like I'm going on a big trip, it's like nothing. That's why it's very important, it's very important that you have great communities, and great police departments, and all those things that make, I'm going to go so slow going out of town, but I just, this happened to me in Chatfield once, and they, after a meeting. But the quality of the community that you run is vitally important to what we are able to do from an economic development standpoint. To bring it back home, one of the commitments we made to you, and I remember doing this a few years ago, a couple of years ago, that was to, was to establish a community's council. And we had done that, and Casson has served as an anchor tenant to that group, it is several cities, not Rochester, in the area, because we have more like needs. We discussed development in the communities, we discussed challenges related to that, and it is all either the city administrator or economic development directors, you are well represented there on a very consistent basis, we very much appreciate that, and then their peers from a number of various cities, I think there are nine right now. And I think one other's looking at joining that. And we are also putting a little bit of our money where our mouth is, you do pay us, and we appreciate your investment in Rochester area economic development. But we are currently advancing a study, I know these guys know that, but we are currently advancing a study, actually it'll be about twenty thousand dollars, to look at the economic development needs of the region. So then, then we can provide you better information as you grow forward. And then how we can better support you, you know, is that other financing tools, we administer a lot of deed tools and other things that when people want to grow and develop, but a lot of that comes out of your own community as you expand utilities and have more police officers and all the other things you have to do to run this place. But we want to make sure that we're giving all the tools necessary, we're also going to partner with Smith on that proposal, they're going to, we're going to ask some funding for them, to really look at how we can better serve the communities that are most important to this metropolitan statistical area. And Casson's an anchor tenant of that. So, it's a, it's a good, it's a good opportunity also for those cities to get together and talk about, well, I have a challenge with this or that, and we all know it's competitive, everyone would like a business to go here instead of Storerville, wherever that might be. But at the same time, we have more things in common than we have opposed, and I think it's a really wonderful thing to bring people together because I think we're stronger together. So we've created an economic development model that is very unique, where we are, and we also apply staff to that, we have Kirk Brewstrom is his name, who is a certified economic development director, he's got thirty years of experience around the state with deed and the federal EDA and all kinds of things, he staffs it. Molly Schmidt from our staff also supports that effort, and then of course we have, we actually work for the council essentially, and we are very careful, we don't run the meeting, we frame the meeting, the chair of the board is a rotated, I think we did it in alpha order. So Byron was supposed to go first, it was Chatfield because he didn't want to, now it's going to be him, and then it's going to rotate through and, I'm not sure when Kay comes up in a couple of years. And so it's, it's the citizen leadership of the communities that drive the agenda and the work that that group does, not what we say, it's a great way to do it. But we work collaboratively, I'm very proud of that initiative, I think we've seen, and we will continue to see growth, some of you may be aware that there is movement to create a regional development organization, an RDO it's called, there are nine in the state, there are two regions that do not, well actually three, but two officially that do not have it, St. Cloud and the eleven counties in southeast Minnesota. There's region nine gets a lot of attention, that's over to our west. And, well Minneapolis doesn't, but they have the Met Council. So they have all other planning layers. So there is a discussion going on about, and I know you guys are tracking that, about should we look at a regional development organization for eleven counties? And we are, staying involved in it, we work very closely with Zeta and Smith and other organizations to really look and make sure first do we need it? Two, are you willing to pay for it? Because the way that model works ultimately is every county pays a portioned share into it. And if you're a big county, well, the biggest county gets two votes, they have two county commissioners that are, it's not, it's not because I want it that way, it's by statute. And they also pay a ton of money. But even the smallest county might pay as much as forty thousand dollars a year, big county could pay hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this is not an easy lift, it's got to make a whole lot of sense, and there's a lot more to come in that discussion. But it's something you'll keep your eye on because it'll happen, I don't, I may be retired by the time it happens, but it, there's discussion about that. My point tonight is to thank you, appreciate what you're doing, let you know as a council that your staff is doing a great job engaging with this region, they care deeply about this community and they're passionate about it, and we are, we are grateful for that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, if there's something I missed that you'd like me to talk more about, happy to do that, or politely thank you for all you do, investing in us and the work that you're doing. Anything else you'd like? Ask me something, anything, you're happy with anything you're doing, is there anything else to do more of? Happy to, you can contact us through your representatives, we're happy to, or directly. With that, I thank you very much for the time to update you broadly speaking on the economy and applaud your efforts, so thank you.
Thank you.
And a great police department. Sorry, I just want to say that as I'm driving carefully out of here tonight. So thank you.
Okay. Next, mayor's report, I have nothing for tonight, public forum, we have one card, Sonia Thompson, come up, podium, name, address.
My name is Sonia Thompson, my address is eighteen hundred, twentieth avenue circle, here in Casson. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, I'm coming here as a resident and also a member of Five Oh Four Ventures, which is building the apartment building on the corner of Sixteenth Street and Fifth Avenue. I want you to know that we were not aware that there were concerns regarding the Fifth Street morning drop-off until I read a comment on Facebook, and it was referring to the superintendent's visit to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So after I saw that comment, I reached out to Superintendent Giezi, and she was very open and receptive to meet. So we greatly appreciate the opportunity for collaboration between the construction team and the school, along with you all as city leaders, as we work together to be good neighbors, ensure student safety, and allow the project to move forward smoothly. We were able to meet on site this morning with Superintendent Jeremy Lawson, who is the superintendent from Key Builders. And we discussed the issue to identify some mutually acceptable solutions that we could bring to you tonight as you look to review what planning and zoning is suggesting. So the one thing that, there were two things that came to my mind as I watched the video because I wasn't aware it wasn't here. Number one, the fire chief, I don't know if it was exactly him or someone, mentioned that there was plenty of parking for construction along the side street, which happens to be the private drive, that the council said there would be no parking on. So there is not, there's not parking available there. The second thing is, we are for student safety, and that was the reason that I connected with superintendent this morning, so we, we made a list of three real basic things that would help us all move forward in a positive manner. So the first thing is, if we could maintain the current parking as it is, that would help our construction staff. I understand that it is a challenge, so we talked about the concerns of busing radius and maintaining line of sight, so we, we talked about an acceptable distance from the corner that the superintendent on site would maintain under parking zone, that he would enforce that, he would talk to all the subcontractors and let them know that they would not be parking there, end of story. Number two, a future adjustment, after July twenty twenty-six, when the apartment would be hopefully fully, fully filled up, that once that building opens and residents move in, we propose that there be a no parking zone on the west side of the street, which is aside next to the apartment, because that coincides with, say, France to school and some other things, between seven thirty and three thirty, that would support student safety and provide some additional room on the street for that fifteen to twenty minute crazy morning rush. And then the third thing, be an ongoing review, if, after it is occupied, really, or at any time, if the expectations that we've set, or the agreement that we've made that we're bringing to you to consider tonight are not being met, we are fully open to revisiting and adjusting the plan to coordinate with the city and the school to make sure, we're all good neighbors, we're working together to ensure the safety of the students. So, that's all I have, thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. No public hearing, committee report, planning commission.
All right, so Planning Commission meeting on last week, Monday evening, we had a public hearing to consider, let's see.
The recommendation.
The recommendation.
Parking shows Fifth Avenue.
Well, it was not a public hearing, but yes, Superintendent Beth Giezi came and spoke about the concerns with parking on Fifth Avenue Northeast, the Planning Commission gave a recommendation to essentially have the no parking between seven thirty and three thirty on both sides of Fifth Avenue Northeast. There wasn't really a timeline put on that, I don't believe, during the discussion with the Planning Commission. But that's the recommendation that they are forwarding to council.
Yes. Would you like to give any more comments, Beth?
I apologize for the way I'm dressed, I'm on my way to volleyball. Yeah, we had a great meeting today, and there was some miscommunication, the person I was reaching out to wasn't probably the perfect person to be communicating with, and I do apologize for that. We stood out in the cold for a long time today, and we really looked at kind of give and take and what it would look like. I love what came from the meeting we had, but after discussing, there is nowhere for the construction vehicles to go, and we want to be good neighbors. I think I said it in my, in that meeting that night, we're excited for the growth of this community, we're excited to bring kids in, I mentioned that at one of your other apartment buildings brought in eight students within the day it opened, that's a big deal. And this is how we continue to grow our amazing school district. So, after we discussed today, everything that she mentioned, I do concur with, I think it would be a great starting place, I think closing the west side allows me to still do safe schools, when there's no curb between the bike path, we receive some funding to go along with that, so it's important that it's the west side and not the east side, that allows our buses to swing the way we want them to swing, and not hit any vehicles that are sitting there. So, again, kind of a plus for us. So I think they would have rather had it the other side, but at the end of it, we had a great meeting and I feel like we're in a good place. It also allows, some of the concern was pulling out, you're basically pulling onto the bike path to be able to look out, if there's no vehicles on either side, that's going to help with that as well. So I can certainly go along with the recommendation if, if that is, you know, up to the mayor and the council here for you guys to decide, but we are good with the amendments that you heard this evening.
So, just to be clear, you're, you're looking at no parking on the west side from seven thirty to three, just to match the signs on Sixteenth Street?
Three thirty, I believe.
You want three thirty? Okay.
It would be best.
The signs on Sixteenth Street are three o'clock, but I can talk to the, see if we can get that revised on the signage, but when would you like this to start?
We had a good conversation about that today, with the construction vehicles not really having a place to go, we would be okay with July, we are rerouting our middle school students right now over to the elementary side, it's not a big biking season right now, now we're going into winter, so we'll be okay until spring, and then we will have safety guards out there again in the spring, once it gets nice and the kids get on their bikes, we'll route them to the east side, and then they will do the crosswalk over to the middle school.
So July of twenty-six, you're comfortable with it until?
Right, we're out of school in May, so, I mean, honestly, August twenty-sixth or whatever it is would be great.
Sure they're hoping to be open before that, certainly.
I think we're all hoping, we're all hoping, yeah. We even discussed using a portion of our parking lot at the elementary for construction vehicles, we have very good cameras in that area, and that would be a possibility, they were a little bit concerned about their vehicles, they're big, they're oversized, you know, you've still got some things there, so I think the biggest fix was her point one, if we can go from Sixteenth Street to past, you know, kind of that area to let our buses swing, and we're going to start that effective now, the superintendent that was out there was very firm that he would make that happen. I drove by later today and checked and he had already moved the vehicles that were there.
So they're going to coordinate that component at this time?
We are going to coordinate everything until July.
Okay, so we'll be implementing signage then, when that period?
That would be our hope.
Okay.
We really feel strongly about the west side being clear so our kids can go back to riding their bikes to the middle school on the correct side.
Correct.
One concern I've got, early in the morning when the buses are coming and the kids are going, a lot of times the construction is going before, during that time, is there a way the construction crew can, I know they like to get going, but can they postpone or try to be a lot more careful? Because kids are not going to pay attention to the construction crews.
We do have.
I know you got barricades up, but kids are not going to pay attention to that either, if we can work with the construction crew to have them wait until, doing anything major out there, until the kids are in school?
I can, I can talk to Jeremy, he was really receptive.
Because, you know what I'm saying, kids are not always going to follow the rule, and, and that age group, it's, the elementary, a lot of times they're getting dropped off to middle school.
Yeah, we do have a lot of staff out there, we have three personnel that stand out there right away in the morning, but that, you know, that helps a little bit when they see adults standing there, but.
Oh, sure.
I can, I have Jeremy's number and I can certainly contact him as well.
Something major that, that you're seeing, that you're looking?
There was just a, before we even put the barricades up, when they were first going there, they had the crane moving out and they were unloading, and kids were walking right nearby it, under it. And that was before the city even got involved and got the barricades out there, and I just don't want that to keep going on. I mean, I haven't seen it since, I haven't heard about it, but I just like to make sure. So we put the notice out now, just to make sure. It's just, it's better safe than sorry.
Absolutely, and I know that Key Builders has asked that the vendors keep their trucks out of the area until after nine and before three, I know that there were some things that we asked of them to make sure that we were respectful of, of it being a school area.
Sure, okay, yeah, I haven't heard anything since the very beginning, when it first happened, and I don't, few people bring it up, and that.
Sonia, do you know how long that crane is going to be out there?
It should only, I, I don't have a construction schedule, but I do expect it to be there until the roof is on.
True.
And I know that, that the estimation is a week per floor, and then two weeks for the roof. So we're, we've got the first floor on, so we probably have another four weeks, maybe up, maybe up to six.
Thank you.
And the other idea you already brought up was parking the construction vehicles across in the school parking lot, you know, if they can unload and then take some over there, you know, if they don't need to stagger that many over there, that was the only other option I had, but you already brought that up, because that would help a lot.
Have a spot for them, if, if they're willing to do that, we, we can make a spot for that.
Because I think that would save, because some of them trucks when they come in there, all trucks and trailers, when you start blocking the sightline, you know, you know, like today there was just a couple vans, but some days you get there and then you're going to have some bigger vehicles there, and that's when you're going to start losing your sightline.
And there won't, that, that sightline will not be a problem going forward because I don't know if you want to see the map or the area that we, we talked about this morning?
Yeah.
I put together just something quick so you can see.
I'll just share it, that's okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That will be nice.
So basically to the.
Yeah.
To the, the entrance?
Mm-hmm.
Or this exit, where the stop sign was, is potentially, you know, where the construction site starts, so anything from Sixteenth.
To that point.
To that point should be parking free, and Jeremy was very firm, he would enforce that, and let you know as of immediately, there should not be.
Oh, no, I like that, that's.
Okay, so just one more time for my clarity, the time restricted parking would go into effect, say, August of twenty-six, when the construction's done, and until then, the construction team and the school will work to maintain no parking in this area from the street, down the Fifth Street here in the time being, is that?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
All right. Well, then.
The action we'll be looking for would be a motion from council to proceed with those amended recommendations in terms of signage, starting next summer.
And if, if you have any issues with the parking, you know, if it doesn't work for you, let the city know, we can come back and put the no parking in sooner. You know, if it doesn't work out for both sites, you know, if we start having issues, but other than that, I think we're fine, so. I would take a motion with amendments to approve, and the amendments were.
During implementation until summer of twenty-six, and then implementing no parking in the west side with the signage.
Yeah. So, you can get everybody follow that? I would take a motion to approve that.
Am I, should I be abstaining from anything since I work for the district?
Do you have a personal interest in this, I don't think it should be a problem?
No, I was the one that posted on Facebook that this meeting was happening, and I should have known better than to post on any Facebook page, letting people know what's going on because it just doesn't help, which is unfortunate, because all we're trying to do is help, but just seems to make things worse every time you do try to help someone on Facebook, in this community it makes it worse, and that's frustrating.
I was thankful to know so I could at least, so that we could at least connect because, given that there was a disconnect, I mean, she was trying to do her best and we want to be good neighbors, so, I mean, it was, it was a great opportunity, I understand what you're saying, but it worked out as, as well as it could have, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I had messaged Aaron back and forth yesterday after he had seen that as well, and it's, it's just, it's disheartening on our, on my end that people make such assumptions that we're getting kickbacks from this, and that there's a reason that we did all of this, is to improve our community. Let's, let's stop and think for a minute before we post on the internet that we were simply trying to support our community, and someone that wants to improve our community. So, let's think about that before we go on there and accuse council members and staff. I will make the motion.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pounce? Thank you. And I hope this all works out well.
Thank you.
Okay, next committee report, parkland dedication.
All right, so this was something that the council had discussed previously. Our consulting planner Brad Scheib did do some more research to come up with some ideas for parkland dedication. And so, included in your packets this evening is a memo that Brad drafted. Just going through it here, talks about just the process of parkland dedication as defined in state statute. And it's also kind of guided by our comprehensive plan. So, whenever we have a new plat that comes in, we review what the parkland needs are that come through. If there's a designated park area within the plat that's defined by our comprehensive plan, then we would consider an actual land dedication. If that's not the case and there's no designated park area within the plat, then we would consider a cash fee instead of the land or some combination of land and, and a cash fee paid for that. So, up until now, or at least as recent times go, the city has been charging a fee based on the, a, based on an approximate value of twelve thousand dollars per acre times ten percent. So, if you factor that in, it just works out based on that. It's not based on like number of units or the type of housing. It's just a simple, based on the acreage and then you do this multiplication and you come up with the fee. And so, the discussion that the councils had afterwards is kind of changing how we, how we look at that. And so, what came out of that discussion was changing the formula so that it is based off of number of units and then also determined on the actual type of, type of units. So, whether it's single family homes or a manufactured home or a smaller sort of town home development or larger town home development or apartments. So, you can see in the memo, there's some proposed numbers there. So, we've got five hundred dollars per unit for a single family attached dwellings, four hundred and twenty-five dollars per unit for manufactured homes or two to five unit single family attached dwellings or three hundred and seventy-five dollars per unit for, um, a multifamily units, five units or greater. And also, single family attached dwellings that are that size as well. So, that does kind of change pretty significantly how we've been doing things up to this point, but if the council thinks it's a more equitable situation, I think as staff, we'd be comfortable moving forward with this sort of arrangement as proposed. There's also some discussion in here about charging a parkland fee for commercial or industrial development, um, just such as like five hundred or a thousand dollars per acre. You can make the argument that, that sort of development also draws demand to our park system. Just kind of depends what you, how you think of it. But, yeah, that's, that's the recommendation here we've got from staff and the, the research that's been put into parkland dedication. If there's any questions?
Just for informational sake tonight, if you do have any questions, please let us know. I think the, the whole gist of it is that, in essence, the multifamily parkland fee would be a greater percentage compared to where it is currently versus the single family, which is kind of the, the lay of the land the council gave us to take a look at. So, a good example would be, you know, the, the sand company subdivision. Their apartment was on two and a half acres, so the amount of actual parkland fee they pay is relatively small, whereas we have a lot of units. Whereas, say you had two and a half acres on a regular, a single family home development, you might have five acres, you know, five units an acre or something like that. So, it would, it would, it would perhaps be more equitable because the utilization would be greater for the park from someone who is maybe living in an apartment as opposed to someone who has their own yard. So, I think that's just the kind of overhaul scape of it, so.
I, I did wanna add something from our prior conversation on this. I'm pretty in favor of us also charging for commercial properties and I know I talked to you about that, Tim. If someone wants to open a business in Casson and they're that against promoting our community, like I, I would have concerns about that business being here in the first place. So, if they're viewing that as a barrier to entry, I, I don't know that, that would be the right business for us anyways. So, that's just my two cents on whether we charge commercial, industrial or not. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Has Ben taken a look at these and talked about them at all with you guys and does he feel like those fees are gonna help? You know, he has the numbers from our previous study when we looked at the needs assessment. Um, you know, the, the issue we always run into is, you know, park dedication fees are never gonna generate enough for the park system. I think, you know, the consultant feels like it's maybe a third, maybe thirty percent of the, the need and, um, so, I mean, we're always gonna supplement that with funding. We'll be talking about that a little bit tonight, baby. But, but I think, you know, we're certainly, you know, glad to segment those revenues out too and put them into a park fund. I think that's a good way to do it and that way, you know, we can say, here's the direct benefit, you know, that park model that would have been fifty thousand while we have some funding available from the park dedication fees. So, as we grow, we kind of try to put as much of that away as we can.
Definitely in favor, but I just don't wanna raise all those rates and costs and not have a plan for them or think they're actually gonna be beneficial.
Oh, I appreciate that. It's a good question.
I'll just reiterate an email I sent to Tim, um, just requesting some sort of numbers on, you know, what kind of deficit we've been running with our parkland dedication versus spending and then what these changes would do for, you know, cause we've, I think we've had developments that meet all three of these criterias. We can look back and see what the delta would've been if we had done this before and see, you know, how, how much are we actually raising rates?
Yeah, I think that, um, I think that Brad did send some emails out to you today, Paul.
I saw him reply saying that he could do it. I didn't see if he-
Yeah, I think he had some, some Excel spreadsheets there. So, and you take a look and let me know if you have any more questions. But, yeah, I, I know that we're not gonna meet our goal of, you know, a hundred percent, but it's-
Yeah, we were pretty, pretty low.
But it's, uh, you know, it's just trying to, to do the best we can with it, so. But, yeah, we'll be bringing this back for approval at a future meeting. Um, there's revised, I mean, it's, it's essence, we're going from acres to lots or to users and that's, it's kind of the same thing with like a franchise fee versus a, a property taxes. You know, how many users do you have versus how many people are, you know, it kind of captures all that, that aspect. So, thank you.
Okay. Up next, old business, cannabis ordinance.
Um, including your packet, you have a couple of items tonight. Um, these are updates, just, uh, some of them are related to changes in the statute, but you can see there, you've got an update included in your packet with the implementation and where they're at now. Um, the low potency hemp edible licensing closes the end of this month. So, we're expecting, hopefully, that process continues smoothly for those, uh, people participating. Uh, we also received our first application. Yeah, I don't know, Linda, if you want me to talk about that or if you want to, to discuss it?
There, I don't know if there's much to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, if there's any questions on it, it's in your packet. Um, you can kind of see what's, what's there. It's, uh, the first application, it's for a cannabis micro business, um, which is retail and, and indoor grow, growing. So, um, this person's reached out to us, you know, they have their license registration, so, um, they're looking at potentially opening a location here in Casson. They've identified a site they'd like to, uh, potentially purchase. Um, it does meet our zoning requirements, um, both the current ones and the potential future ones that the planning commission's reviewing. So, you know, that's up for your consideration. Um, you know, we kind of debated, you know, some cities are looking at council approval for these registrations, some are not. Um, we're bringing it to you because it's the first one we received and we wanna make sure that you're aware of it.
Um, what address in town were they looking at?
Uh, I believe they were looking at the, uh, old Opportunity Services Building here off of the French Road.
Okay.
It fits in all the guidelines of the zoning?
That's correct.
Yeah, I think when we were looking at the map, at planning and zoning, pretty much the only area that's gonna be within allowable zone is gonna be right here on the way here to City Hall.
And the south side.
Oh, and of course, south side too. Is it a commercial district or?
Yeah, we are limited to that, kind of that core.
Was that with or without the suggested change, Paul, that you had suggested at planning and zoning?
I think, I think that would still be acceptable. Yeah.
Okay. Cause would that, was that, the suggestion was at a thousand feet? Would that, was that suggestion in congruence with, with state laws and rules?
No, uh, Mr. Scheib indicated that he didn't feel like that was gonna be able to be done because it, it overstepped the state statute. But, uh, with, when it came to daycares, um, but, uh, but yeah, otherwise it wouldn't be an issue and we did do some measurements, even at the thousand feet, it would still be a qualifying property. So, we know that there is a limited number of them. Uh, one thing that's exempted, just so you're aware, is those CBD, low potency, those are not covered with this, so they don't have the, the same graphical limitations or geographic So, I guess if, um, if there's any questions, we'll take those. Otherwise, having brought it to you, we'd be looking for some kind of direction from councils, whether to approve either at a staff level, if you direct us to, or if the council would like to, uh, to take this through and make a motion.
Would we, have we typically done this with other liquor and smoke shops? Have we brought that to councils?
Yeah, typically we have the, the permits going to your consent agenda each year as their renewals come due for liquor and for the cigarette licenses.
Handle those the same, maybe?
I would make it the same.
Sure. And I think going forward, that would be as we would, and I mean, I'm not necessarily expecting a lot of these businesses, but I think we would, as those annual renewals would come up, typically, we would include in your, in your packet at that time.
And I would have staff review application, make sure it fits in all the guidelines.
Yeah.
And, uh, remind me, did, did we restrict the number that we were gonna give out?
Um, no, the city council last year decided not to restrict the number.
Okay.
Because of those limited spaces to put them.
Okay. Um, and we're not allowed to deny the application, right? Assuming it meets all the requirements?
Um, that's my understanding, the state statute.
So, I thought, okay. Yeah, I think, I think if we follow the same procedure we do for liquor license and tobacco license, that makes sense.
So, would, would that be a motion to approve this one then, or?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion?
So, then moving forward, when we do those annual renewals, we'll include it in your, your packet at that time. But, like I said, just wanted to bring this one to you kind of because it's the first one we've seen, so.
We have a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pounce? Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Up next, health insurance.
Well, at our last meeting, you, uh, we were fortunate to have, uh, Mr. Singer here to present and, uh, you know, he kind of ran through the, uh, the numbers. Since then, we did receive a few more, um, the, I believe it, which one was it, Linda? The, uh, medical one came in. As you can see, that, that definitely is not, um, gonna be the most cost effective. Um, so, we do have a spreadsheet included in here that kind of gives you an idea of what the, uh, the numbers will look like on the rates, the cost to the city, including those monthly premiums and the, um, and the HSA contributions. Anyway, so, that information's there. Um, you know, I, I think it's certainly up to the council how you'd like to take direction on that. Um, you know, we looked at, there's a couple that seem like it's, my opinion, it falls between that thirty-four or the forty-two, um, in terms of what you wanna see the deductibles at. Relatively close, um, in terms of quality for the employee, but that's certainly up to the council, whichever you decide. The lowest cost one, you know, would be that forty-two, single, eighty-four family deductible We do need to get some direction from council. We have the, I believe that's next week, we have the insurance roundup scheduled for staff.
Open enrollment starts November first, too.
It was going to move up three hundred and fifty, no matter what, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, it would've been that three thousand and fifty. Even the identical plan would've been that three thousand and fifty, single and then sixty-one hundred family deductible.
So, this didn't change the HSA at all? You guys, we talked about HSA last time, didn't we?
It changes the HSA because it's, or the HSA because it's a thing you put in and a half of that.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see now, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, you're saying the one with the forty-two hundred deductible, single, eighty-four hundred family, even with the HSA allotment is the cheapest?
Uh, based on the numbers, those, that's, that's what it appears, that's the apparent-
And it's gonna go up anywhere from twelve to fourteen percent?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, you know, on average, we would expect it to be kind of the middle because obviously we have some that are families, some that are single. So, between eleven point six eight and thirteen point six four, so, say twelve percent on average, maybe.
Because the medical insurance is alone on that plan goes up either ten point three three or seven point two four percent.
I mean, you don't wanna see the deductibles to go up, but I mean, as the Affordable Care Act does, it does go up anyways. But, this would be the best value for the city. It's a little harder on the employee per se, but then they have the options to contribute to their HSA also.
HSA is capped, correct? What's it?
Yes, HSA is are capped for-
Seventy-five hundred this year? I think they-
A little more.
Okay, I don't know if they've changed that. I think that one's-
And then if you're over fifty-five, you can put an extra thousand in.
Yeah. And if you don't use it, then it stays over for-
It carries, yeah.
Eighty-five fifty for families, forty-three hundred for individuals.
Okay. Eighty-five fifty for families.
So, we'd be providing almost half of the maximum. And we raised the deductible, but then provide half of basically the maximum HSA.
So, they, yeah, they're actually gaining-
Yeah, so their out-of-pocket would be forty-two hundred for the family and it would be, you know, twenty-one hundred for the, for the single.
Yeah, and if they went to the single, they're out-of-pocket, if you did the thirty-four hundred, it would be, you know, seventeen-
Seventeen hundred and thirty, and thirty-four hundred.
The fact that both have the HSA covering the single deductible, is that kind of a wash then for the user?
Is that?
Is it kind of a wash for the user, so it's not, if you're on the single plan, it's thirty-four hundred as the HSA match that the city gives?
If you're on the single plan, it's half of that deductible, so it'd be seventeen hundred.
Now, it's column M there is how much that we, the city provides. So, no matter which option we choose, we cover half the deductible.
That's right.
All right.
Right?
Thank you.
But, if they don't use the deductibles, just extra money, right? So, for them?
For medical costs down the road.
For medical costs down the road, so personally, I like that better, but not everybody might.
Non-taxed.
Um, I guess I'd make the motion to go with, what are we calling that? Option two for Blue Cross?
The forty-two hundred, eighty-four?
Forty, yes.
We have a motion to switch insurance to the forty-two hundred, single, eighty-four hundred family deductible. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pounce? Okay.
All right. We'll read it down to staff.
And if you could let us know kind of roughly the number when we're, people sign up, see where we're at.
Yeah. If you want, just know, are you asking for how many are single, how many are family?
Well, I'd like to see the percentage increase, you know, cause there'll be single[1748.82] Well, I'd like to see the percentage increase, you know, because there'll be single and family.
Sure.
Just to see where we fall in there.
Keep track of how many are each, that'll be, we'll, we'll get that, we'll know that number by the end of the year, so.
Just curiosity, it's.
A lot of times it doesn't change much.
Right.
Because we have eighteen, single, fifteen families.
Yep.
It really, unless somebody drops or somebody does something else, it, it may go down for some people because they have kids graduating off the program. But good.
Sure. The other item that you have in there that, uh, actually was kind of a layback there is the, uh, health insurance option. Linda has identified potentially some cost savings. Life insurance, sorry, that's what I was. Um, and Linda, I'll let you talk about that.
Yes. Less than what we're paying UNOM now for a ten thousand dollar life insurance policy, we can go with Hartford, Hartford, right? I was dealing with so many different insurance companies. We can go with Hartford and get a twenty-five thousand dollar life insurance policy for less. The city pays for that totally. It is, however, uh, COBRA eligible, so when somebody quits or anything else, they can, they can take that as portable. But it is over half, and it's less cost. Uh, it won't, we don't have to buy anything else from Hartford to get this program, and UNOM won't kick us off for dropping one of their programs.
And this twenty-five thousand policy for four dollars, point three seven five cents, is that, uh?
That's a month.
A month, that's one, it didn't say that, so that's why I was curious.
That's a month.
So I didn't know if it was weekly, monthly, so.
And is this just a benefit the city covers, or is this an opt-in from the?
The city covers.
Okay. Seems like a no brainer, then.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to make sure that, you know.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yeah, it sounds good, so.
I would make the motion that we switch insurance policies, as long as there's no greater effect. Like, as you said, they won't kick us off or other things, so I would make that motion to switch to Hartford for that twenty-five thousand dollar policy.
Second.
We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Thank you, everybody. Up next, an old business is, I think we'll just, it's about a public hearing for an appeal.
We've got, uh, three items in there, Mr. Muir.
We do.
The first item, and maybe Ian, you can bring these up in Dropbox. The first item is the, uh, the email letter of, uh, appeal from, uh, Mr. Norrie. Um, I included that, so you can, you can see that was received on October ninth. Um, the second item is, uh, criteria, um, that a council should consider before granting an appeal, before even granting the appeal hearing. Um, last item would be a resolution that would order a hearing. And I'm interested in the city attorney's feedback, too, a little bit on, uh, what she thinks would be prudent. I guess the, the thought I've had is, you know, this is a, a hearing, he's asking the council to reconsider its own decision. So it's not a reconsideration of planning and zoning or a staff decision. It occurred in September, and as far as I know, circumstances have not changed. So before we would even grant a hearing, and this is just my thought process, I'm kind of laying out, like I said, interested in what the city attorney has to say, you know, I, I guess, to me, you know, before we grant that, we do the publication, the notice, we spend the money that was paid for this, letters, all that. I, I'm not sure the likelihood of the appeal being granted, and I don't want that to be just another frustration for either us or for the applicant. But I don't know if you've got any feedback on that.
Yeah, he, it, if, if he's requested an appeal, we have to provide him with that appeal pursuant to our own ordinances, so. Furthermore, he, he is claiming that, um, the lawsuit that the city has initiated against him for, um, the, the injunction to remove the fence, uh, that's in violation of the ordinance. He's claiming that we can't proceed with that because of this appeal. But his appeal relates only to the city's action to revoke his conditional use permit. Our lawsuit doesn't have anything to do with revoking that conditional use permit. It's entirely related to an action about the offense because it's in violation of the ordinance. While related, his appeal does not stay the city's action in the lawsuit, which is what he's trying to claim. But he is entitled to the appeal, so I do think that we should proceed with, um, setting the, the hearing date on, for the appeal.
All right, sounds good.
That's my, that's my recommendation.
Him finishing the fence after we voted to reconsider his, or his permit, did that have any bearing on any of this? Could it nullify his appeal because he finished it after the fact on his own?
No, no, I, I, yeah, the, in my opinion, he's, we, we've brought the, we've, we've now revoked his conditional use permit. If he wants to appeal that regardless of what's happened, he's entitled to that appeal.
All right, well, then we have the resolution in your packet. Uh, it would be ordering the, uh, hearing for the nineteenth of November.
So are we expecting, um, written evidence appeals from the applicant to consider? Or is it going to be verbal at the podium for five minutes? How, how exactly is the procedure expected to be handled?
I would, he can submit either or both, um, and I, I, he would, um, like a regular public hearing, I don't think he would be limited to five minutes. I think that we would want to listen to his appeal in its entirety.
But there wouldn't be a back and forth, would it be a, he gets his say and then we get our discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just like any public hearing, they're allowed to talk, we close the public hearing, then the council discusses. Just like a planning, zoning, when there's a public hearing.
Okay.
You open it, the public speaks, you're closing.
Remind me of the date of the appeal will happen?
November nineteenth.
The next council?
Next council meeting, sixth. No, it's going to be in council chambers. Per ordinance, states any public hearing is in council chamber. So I would take a motion to approve the resolution, call for a public hearing for the appeals of Mr. Norrie's conditional use permit revocation.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brian, we have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, motion carries. Send those letters out and notify everybody and. Next, new business, twenty-twenty-six fee schedule, first look.
I sent it out to all the department heads and all, all, I've gotten a few back. So what is read in there is, uh, the new requests. Uh, the cemetery, uh, our gravedigger is retiring, but he also increased his rate. And he will keep doing it until he finds a replacement. So that's why the cemetery ones are going up. So I don't have all of them, this is just a first look. But if you have any questions on any of the rates that are changed right now, I can answer the questions.
Yeah, I think the only one thing that stood out to me was the, um, golf cart permits going up.
And this may be one of the answers.
Yeah, is that, is that purely because it's taking more time administratively to issue these and check on things than, than it has? Because I, I just want to make sure we're not, like, raising the fee because, you know, we can make a little extra there. Because I might just drive people to just not register, and that would be worse, I think, so.
It's, it is a time-consuming process to, to do the registration, so just keeping up with the increased wages.
Okay, I would just ask if, maybe, maybe thirty-five instead of forty on that, just to try and keep the increase a little, if.
You got to look at it, it's a three-year, and you got to look at how much time is spent?
I, I understand, but I also don't want people to look at the price, you know, forty dollars or fifty dollars in next year and be like, yeah, I'll just, I'll just not get caught.
Until they get a ticket, and then the ticket's a hundred and some dollars.
What's the ticket cost for an unregistered golf cart?
Uh, it'd probably just be like a base twenty-five to thirty-dollar fee plus whatever the surcharges for the courts are.
So almost.
So you could get a, you could get a permit a lot cheaper.
Okay.
We, we're not out to make money, we're out to cover our costs and.
It is a three-year, so that, that is one thing to keep in mind, too. So you're, you're looking at going from ten dollars to thirteen dollars per year, so it's not a, necessarily a deal breaker. But certainly this will all be up for, you know, uh, a vote later this year, when we have this finalized.
Sure.
Um, you know, you can see what's been submitted to Linda right now, and then, um, I don't know that. Changes at the aquatic center, I think Park and, uh, Park and Rec Committee will probably be discussing that, uh, in November.
Well, as we get more numbers.
It'll come back.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Uh, personnel policy handbook updates, first look.
Did you take that one, too, Linda?
Yep. Again, um, I went through the League's model personnel policy, compared it to ours, there is some changes. There is the, um, Minnesota Paid Leave Act. There are some things that I think I left the, um, League's wording in there because it's not final yet. So this is just a first look, and once I get, um, the final answers, it'll come back again. But it, it mirrors, it mirrors the League's policies.
Didn't look like too many changes.
No, there isn't a lot of changes. We, we update this, like, we're, I try to do it every year, so there isn't a lot of changes.
There's three pages of stuff inserted.
Yeah, that's the Minnesota Paid Leave.
I know. Three pages, I think it's a lot of changes, but, I mean, it's just, I assume copy and pasted from.
Only one page, or the one topic.
Yeah, it's all from one topic, I agree.
Okay.
So it's just informational.
Thank you.
When are you looking for approval for that?
Uh, probably in December.
In December.
The second meeting in December.
Okay, thank you. Uh, up next, an ordinance removal of section fifty-five point eleven.
This is another thing, uh, just trying to clean up some. Uh, I think there will be more, um, ordinance things, but Jared has been asking that this one be removed, and it didn't get done the last ordinance update that we had.
On that, all these houses that have those load management controllers on their house, who's, is somebody going to remove them?
I don't think so, no.
So.
It would leave a hole, so I think it's.
But they still power, so I mean, are people losing minute amount of electricity by it being powered up?
That's a question I can ask.
Because if it is, then I would like it to find a way to disconnect them at the property, even if they're there. I just don't want to see people paying a fee for something that's doing nothing. I mean, it might not be a lot, but.
I mean, they're not paying fees for it.
Well, but I mean, your electricity rate.
If it is using electricity, certainly, I can check with Jared on that.
And it might be so minute that it doesn't matter, but I mean, it's, it's interesting, it would be like, I like to know.
Can you check with Jared on that?
Perfect.
Frankly, Dan, if it's, if it's some, it matters, so I agree with you.
Yeah, 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 so I'm just looking at every option, because that's why people put them on originally. When the system did work, it saved them money, now it's, so, all right. Thank you. Up next is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six snow hauling contract.
Uh, there aren't a lot of changes from last year, we haven't, uh, actually utilized the services in the last couple of years, but right now the forecast is for a more significant winter, so, not that we want to, but we want to be prepared for that.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, looking like we've got a, uh, quote there from the folks over at Ims.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, that's right.
I would look for a motion to approve this snow hauling contract.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan, do we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, thank you, everybody. Uh, up next, we have a request from IBEW in your packet about Minnesota Paid Leave.
I mean, I could speak to this, you know, we received this, uh, request from Todd Ingalls. It's a, actually a, how does he term it here, demand, uh, demand to bargain the terms and conditions of the new Paid Leave Act. Um, so I let him know that we would be talking about it. State law, uh, indicates that the additional costs can be split between the employer and the employee. They're requesting, the IBW union is requesting that the city pay eighty percent of that and that the employee pay twenty percent. Um, they're also requesting that they be allowed to top off their pay with any portion of their wage that the plan would not cover using vacation or sick leave. That's their request, or their demand, I guess. I, I don't know that there's any reason that we have to do that, state law is pretty clear. If you would like to do that, that's up to the council. We've been budgeting for a, a fifty-fifty split of the, of the new tax increase for that insurance program. However, we can make a change to the budget if that's needed.
I'd be interested to see if they're willing to give up for that.
That's kind of my thought process, too.
There are tax implications that I don't think they're taking into account with this proposal.
Right, they would have to pay taxes on that, um, actually as a, I don't know if it's considered a gift or how it's considered exactly in the new tax code, but that's true.
Well, and then on top of it, because I did a lot of reading into this, um, it also changes how much they'll get taxed on the benefit as well. So it is pretty sizable tax implications if the city takes on more of it, that if their members use it, it'll end up hurting them in the long run.
Well, I would guess right now, I'm in favor of staying with what the state law says of fifty-fifty. I don't see any reason to go eighty-twenty, I don't see any benefit either way. As Brian stated, it might actually be hurtful going that way for the, you know, and far as using sick or vacation time to cover their difference, why not? It's, uh, it's theirs, it would take it off our books, it'd be one less liability, you know. If they only get covered to a certain percent and they need to cover their full value, I'm all for, in favor of that.
Yeah, I don't mind the top up either.
Yeah, and I think typically, I think that, from what I've read, it sounds like the, uh, the max benefit next year is like fourteen fifty to fourteen ninety, I don't know if it's quite determined yet, but. So it's going to range between eighty, fifty and eighty percent for most employees of how much they would be paid to that paid leave. Um, and then I think what they'd be looking at, they'd be looking at, you know, topping it off with that twenty percent or that fifty percent would be through their sick accrual, which in a way would be beneficial to us because we're continuing to extend those healthcare benefits, and that would allow them to pay the healthcare benefit out of that, that time itself, so.
Uh, one question I have, and I don't know, when they get paid, is it like a disability where it's, uh, they're pre-taxed? So what you get is, you don't pay tax on that value?
I don't think so, I don't know, Linda, is it?
Or, or do they have to claim it as income and then pay tax on it?
It's a new program and some of the stuff.
I don't know how the state's going to work it, if you take short-term disability, they, you do get a ten ninety-nine for what they paid you.
Okay.
And you can, when you take your short-term disability, you can opt to take taxes out of that, so you don't have to pay that many taxes. But you will.
Okay.
Have to claim that money. I, I'm assuming.
So it'd be similar.
Real similar, but I don't know that.
Yeah, and, and we probably won't know for a while, I'm sure they're still finalizing, but, okay.
Any other feedback from anyone else on that? Well, I will, uh, I will respond to him and let him know that, uh, council is planning on following state statute in this case, but, um, that we're comfortable with, that doing, allowing them to use their sick or vacation time to fill that gap. Do we want to restrict it to just sick time, or does it, does it matter?
I would, I would say sick time first to get that off the books, and then if they run out of sick time, then they can go to vacation. But I would like to see that sick time usage go down because we have quite a few people who recruit hours, so we could use that at first.
You know if there's anything in the, the state plan that would, I mean, does it say that they use their sick time first, or is that something we can really require or not?
It doesn't require us to, we can't make them use any time. If they wanted to just take the Minnesota Paid Leave and that's what they're going to live on, then we can't make them top it off.
But they would still have to pay their part of the healthcare insurance.
They would still have.
We're probably going to extend on the benefit, but they have to, they'd have to pay a hundred percent of it then, instead of having it deducted out of their wage.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, but if they elect to take the top off, can we force them to do sick time to top off before vacation?
I don't know, I don't know if we can, can we force them to take sick time or not? Or we can ask them to, or we can.
If they want to, we can say, okay, if you want to top it off, first you use sick time, then you use vacation.
Okay, so that's permissive, okay.
It's, it's really up to them, because if they don't want to top it off, they don't have to, and they can just write us a check every month that they're gone for their insurance or anything that they want to keep.
Okay. All right, well, that's what I will forward back to them, so thank you very much for that feedback.
All right, next administrator's report.
All right. Well, as you can see out here at City Hall, the booster station, the, uh, foundation for that, and some of the connections have been dug in, so. That's been, uh, been fun to see, they got, got a lot of the work started before it froze, at least, so that's good. So pluses to the state revenue collection, included an update from the state of Minnesota, their, uh, financial outlook has improved, um, so that's good to hear. Hopefully that'll make sure that the, the things that they're budgeting don't require additional tax increases at the state legislature, um, so hopefully. So hopefully they'll have that forecast out in December. That'll be what they'll use the first half of the legislative session next year. Uh, we began our negotiations with Peoples Co-op, meeting with them this week. So, we've done several acquisitions, as I detailed there, with, um, from Excel the last couple of years. Uh, the, the one with Peoples is gonna be a little different, um, because we have some actual customers. There's three hundred and fifty-six customers in that acquisition that we're, we'll be working with. Um, right now, we're hoping to be able to, uh, close on that, um, in quarter three of twenty-six. So we'll hopefully have an agreement for you beginning of the year, but then it'll be a couple of months. They have to, we provide two months of notifications to the residents so they're all aware of it and then also, uh, take some time for the technical part of the, the work to be done. We have to do some switching, um, so that the, the new feeder line will probably be taking most of the load on the south side. So anyway, just to give you an idea on that. Fire pension numbers, uh, those numbers were updated and with the improved performance from the, uh, from the stock market this year, um, I'm, I'm comfortable recommending that the, uh, the number be moved up to thirty-seven-hundred. The interim number we set earlier was based on six-month performance through the summer. However, the fire chiefs provided those updated numbers, so, um, if the council's comfortable with that, I think that I'd be comfortable with recommending that number. Uh, we did agree that we wanna make sure that it's fully funded so that in case of economic issue with the stock market, 'cause that's what drives their performance, their, their pensions, that it would be at least a hundred and twenty percent funded. I feel like I, I'm being very conservative, but I do think that number in twenty-six could be moved up to twenty, a hundred and twenty-five percent.
I thought we talked a hundred and twenty-five this year. I thought that was the number that we mentioned. Not a hundred and twenty, I thought it was a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, the number I recall is a hundred and twenty. That, that's what the council had set.
I thought it was a hundred and twenty-five, but-
You know, it's up to the council, you know, you guys make the rules, but I'm just detailing what my, my thoughts are on that.
Okay, sorry.
I do think that earlier this year in April, we saw, you know, almost a twenty-two percent drop, you know, during the, the tariff, the initial tariff discussion, so I'm always wary of it, you know, basing a lot of things off of the stock market 'cause it, it does have so much variability. And it seems like economically, just the feeling I have is that things may be slowing down a little bit. So anyway, I'd be looking for action after my report, um, for the council on that. Parking rec, updates, um, a lot of good things. We got our final pool numbers in, so I've input those into the budget. And, um, so, we had, um, operating costs that were lower this year. We also had revenue decreases. They were kind of tandem with the weather, but we had in June especially. Uh, we saw that, uh, utilization was down, uh, because of cold rainy weather. We had almost, I think, seven days that we lost in, in June, so a big chunk of that month to some closures. But hopefully we'll have, uh, continue to make improvements over there. Ben and I have been working on the surfacing. We know there was some, some pit, pitting on the surface in the lap pool. Uh, part of that's just because water tends to sit there over the winter time and gets in those cracks and it tends to freeze thaw, unfortunately, but we're gonna be watching that more closely this year and also, like I said, doing some resurfacing. Compass, um, there'll be some increased costs there. Their, their tariff recovery is going down, um, so there'll be some increased costs to, to Casson and to every other city in that group. So, I had some feedback that I thought they could look at some expenditure reductions as well, but the rest of the board felt like the budget that they had was where they wanted to stay for the time being. So, um, we're gonna be looking at that for next year, about three thousand dollars more a month. That'll be paid out of the electric, electric fund. You've got the updates on planning and zoning. Thanks to Superintendent for coming and presenting. We appreciate that. Mayor for a Day Contest is coming up. I've got a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. Feedback from department heads. We're looking at starting an Employee Wellness Committee. I've authorized the department heads to meet and to discuss this and to assign representative from each of their departments, and Linda, thank you for spearheading that. The goal here is to-
First meeting Monday.
First meeting Monday. The goal is to try to reduce our, we want healthier employees, that's what we want. Also, if that means that we can reduce our utilization of the health insurance, that's gonna be beneficial to, to the whole city because it'll be savings to the employees, or hopefully flatten out those deductible increases, but also, um, be, you know, improvements for, for the budget. So I think that that's gonna be a really good thing. I don't know what's, what they're gonna decide, what they wanna do for twenty-twenty-six, but I think that, um, you know, we've got, uh, we've got an opportunity to do some, some interesting things. Police vehicles, I've had inquiry from council member to talk about reducing the fleet size. I think that's something that we'll be certainly looking at in the, in the budget process because we don't have that many officers who are living in town anymore. In fact, I'm not sure that we have any officers there living in town, so one of the-
Here we do. In town.
In town. Well, I know, we do, we might do currently, but not, well, you're right, we do have a couple. But limited number of officers in town, so council member are interested in seeing if we can reduce that number of vehicles to line up better with, uh, folks. So we'll be taking a look at that. And then I wanted to put a really big thank you out to Kayla from City Hall. Uh, over the last two months, Jessica was out for extended period of time, um, and Kayla did a great job filling in and helping out in utility billing especially. You know, that hasn't always been the smooth process, but with our new software, that's been fully implemented now from Tanlist, she got those bills out and she actually got them out earlier than, than usual. So I mean, we had some calls from people saying, well, why'd I get my bill a week early? Well, our, our goal is to try and get, instead of a week late, we wanna get the bill to you a week early. So really big thank you to her. She did a very good job, um, along with all the other responsibilities that she has, so I appreciate that. And, and the other employees at City Hall stepping up to help fill in for, for Jessica while she was out. So, those are the things I have for tonight. Uh, any questions anyone has for me?
Um, actually, on the billing software, have we gotten it to the, not using the credit card yet? Still working on that?
Jessica's back now, so that is like her number one outside of the billing, the monthly billing. That's a project she's gonna be working on for the next six weeks.
'Cause we wanna make sure we give notification while we're at that.
Yeah, absolutely. That's right.
So we didn't forget.
Nope. She's back today. She was back and ready to work, so I told her after the end of the day, I said, you're sure you're gonna come back tomorrow? She said, yeah.
That's good to hear.
Otherwise, I'd be looking for action on that, um, pension for the Fire Department Relief Association.
Moving the pension number up to thirty-seven-hundred.
That's right.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Up next, Engineers' Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. A holdover from last council meeting, so there is a RCA that we reviewed last council meeting and last council meeting's council packet, um, but ultimately looking at Eighth Avenue Bike Lanes from our Second Avenue Southwest to Fifth Avenue Northwest. That is a corridor that's underutilized with respect to parking, so the discussion was to eliminate one or both sides of the, of the road's parking and convert that into a painted bike lane. Dodge County did recommend, um, both sides, preferred option one. And then, uh, you know, we discussed it. It's gonna close a nice gap in our pedestrian facilities. We talked about the comp plan and the desire for, um, the planning document that shows a desired for trail in that corridor, um, and then I provided a figure that showed how that would, that would look, a little schematic, so, uh, I think there was some good discussion. I think we ultimately tabled it, so we bring it back tonight. So again, I'm just looking for direction on moving forward with, working with the county to get it into their construction plans, 'cause they are planning construction next year. So I'll pause there and see where, see where things go. And I guess there's a do-nothing option, too, so we kinda have three options, right? Do-nothing, leave it as parking, bike lane on one side, parking on the other, bike lanes on both sides, so.
You know my feelings. They haven't changed.
Um, what was, we had discussed about crossing, if we did it just on one side, you know?
Yeah, I think we would cross from the north end at the trail and move everything to the west and then run the bike lane down the west side. There's already a portion of those townhouses that don't have, um, that don't have, already have no parking through a short corridor of the corridor, a short spot within the corridor. And then the east side, um, is likely utilize more parking during like ballgames, that ball field in the library there. So I think that that was the, the conversation is cross them over there, so.
And then it would just stop down by the Lions Park?
Yep, it'd be the entrance to, um, right at the water tower there, where the trail starts.
Where the trail starts.
Uh, we did talk about bringing it all the way to the roundabout at fifty-seven, knowing that the, now that the brewery's picked up again, maybe there's gonna, a reason to not put it there so they can utilize that for parking, so. Again, it's a, it's, we're trading things outright. It's parking on the road, which we know that was underutilized, to utilize it in a pedestrian, more friendly manner. And that was something that was on the comp plan, so when we have opportunities, we bring it, bring it forward to council. And I don't know, I personally have a strong opinion, one way or another.
Sure.
But, yeah, so it's more of a council, what, what do we wanna see with our streets? And a little bit of trade-off, so. And we have now reached out to the property owners. I mean, a lot of times, to me, the proof is in the pudding when we see it on all the areas. And I mentioned how underutilized it was through the corridor and we see that in the aerials, so, you know, we don't need to go talk to property owners and say, do you use the park? We already kinda know that, but I'm happy to have a public meeting, you know, and bring, bring that to them if you'd like to, um, if you are planning a change, so.
Someone who's lived northwest for thirty-some years, I think it's a great idea to have a path. So I, I'd like to at least look at one side. We talked about the west side, correct? So.
Any other input from, as Brian states, he wants none.
Doing one side allows for parking on the other. The west side also has the longer driveways I went over and looked. They do have longer driveways than the east side, so they have enough room for multiple vehicles, even if they throw a elaborate celebration, they have parking.
I could be swayed into one side, but you won't get me on two.
Nope. No, and I agree, too, wouldn't work very well along with the, next to the park and ball field. As long as we can, so, you know, it sounds like the west side would be the best way to do it. And then the trail's right there, it's just crossing over there at the intersection, which is, people do it now.
It's a stop condition, northern southbound, so.
With Fifth, you'd cross over, you'd crosswalk there.
I think so.
I would make the motion to have our west side of that street done and painted and painted.
I'll second.
And second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, there you have your guidance.
Good direction, appreciate it. Thank you, that's all I had, unless you have anything else for me?
That is all, thank you. Okay, roundtable discussion. This is time to chat a little.
Sure, so at our last meeting, there was a request to discuss the liquor store with the retirement, opportunity to kinda discuss where things are at. So included in your packet, I've got a couple items. The operating transfers from Black Mountain and then just a little bit different write-up of that. Wait for that to come up here while I, the, those items basically show what's been transferred from the liquor store over the last fifteen years or so. And since I've been here, that number has been very small. I think, uh, to a certain degree, you know, Kathy was waiting for, um, her remodel. So, you know, one of the thoughts I had was, um, if we wanted to, we talked about, you know, park funding and stuff like that. I think one, one thing the council could do is set a policy where, you know, fifty percent of the profits of the store, less the, the contribution that goes to fund the council's salaries, could be utilized for putting in that park fund, basically topping off where we know we have shortfalls. And that would just be something we would do automatically instead of having to, um, you know, and I know in a previous community where I worked, the liquor store, the city liquor store, that was what it was utilized for, was really for, I would say, puff lots, things that, you know, maybe council, they came to, the public came to them with something that was unbudgeted and said, hey, you know, what about extra modular slide or other equipment like that, or, or changes there? And that's what they typically utilize their liquor store profits for, is for improving the, the park system for the children. So I guess that would be something I would recommend looking at is, is just making a policy where we designate a certain percentage each year and we just make that transfer automatically. And then, um, I think that would, that would net, be good because it would help to show the value of the, of the facility for our community even more than it is now.
Yeah, as you can see, year after year, there's been substantial profit from the liquor store. It's been a benefit to the community. It's, it's helped. I do like the option of where it's set in stone where it's going, so we don't have to decide and try to get it now that it's all fully renovated. And the parks are underutilized right now, so as far as funding, it'd be a great place to spend it. You know, when we say parks, maybe even part of it goes to the aquatic center. If you have an upgrade there that you have to do, I mean, that's-
Sure.
I, I think it's a good idea.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I've got some points against the liquor store. I'm gonna start with, um, this is probably the best time for us to liquidate it. The building is renovated, as you said, like capital improvements have been done. We've got a manager that's been the best manager we could ask for leaving. We don't know how well a new manager's gonna be. If we sell the property and the business, there's probably no better time to do it than now, value-wise. Secondly, um, I don't like that the government is competing with private business. I think that selling liquor is a private venture and is something that we should let private business handle that, that demand. Thirdly, having the liquor store as a liability, not in, not just because, you know, you're selling alcohol and the regulations we have to deal with with that, but secondly, that not every year may be a good year for sales, right? So if we're expecting, you know, a certain amount of money to come out of a liquor store and we don't get it, you know, then we're still short-funded anyway. And then additionally, I would say that, I don't know how much it's worth, but, um, looking at these numbers, we've transferred sixteen thousand dollars a year for the last six years. So looking at our four M fund at four-point-one percent, we could get that same amount of money in a four M fund for four hundred thousand dollars. So if we can sell that business and property and put that, those funds in a four M fund, we can get the same return as we've been getting over the last six years. If we go back to the entire history of the sheet, um, we've had some pretty large transfers in there. Seventy thousand to the library, I see, uh, thirty-five thousand, um, entry monument. I'm not exactly sure what that is. And there is a fifty thousand transfer back in twenty-ten. So just dividing everything out, that's twenty-six thousand dollars a year on average that we've received from the liquor store. Again, using a four M fund, that means six hundred and fifty thousand dollars capital. So I think, I have no idea what the business plus property would be worth, but if we're anywhere in the four and, four hundred to six hundred and fifty thousand dollar range we could sell it for, we could get the same amount of money without having the risk and having employees and the health insurance cost, um, and still set that money aside for the parks. And it would be, you know, very consistent money every year, too, and not just a fifty percent of whatever profit happened to be that year.
So, part of the property, as though you're gonna have to somehow split it 'cause you can't sell the parking lot with the business, 'cause you're gonna lose all your downtown parking, so you gotta take that in consideration. So if you do sell it, you're gonna sell a minimum out. Now, is that building worth as, as much 'cause of, without the parking lot? So you gotta look at that, that's one big option. The other option is-
Parking needs to be available for the business, 'cause it still has public parking, right?
You only have to have one, only, uh, whatever, the designated spot per size, so. So the rest you have to keep, so you have to split, 'cause the city's gonna have to keep that. You need that parking down.
I don't disagree.
And then, uh, you're gonna have to transfer somewhere, you gotta pay the council's payments. As Tim noted, that liquor store pays all that, that's gotta come then out of the funds. So that brings your profit down, out of your, and your four M, what's the odds that it's gonna hit the same amount of gross every year that you were talking? You can't guarantee that. You, you were stating that you'd be at four hundred to six hundred and fifty thousand, you'd make that sixteen thousand or whatever. There's no guarantee in that either. Investments are not a guarantee.
We would expect interest rates to go down, so that interest that's generated by that probably will go down some.
Yep.
I, I don't necessarily think it'll go down to the zero-
No, but-
That it was, you know, five years-
But they're talking in October twenty-ninth, the feds are meeting again.
That's true.
And they said they're dropping it, and then they said they're meeting again before the end of the year. That's another drop. So you gotta look at that. Interest is, goes up and down, too. There's no guarantee on that.
Right, but if we don't have the property, we'll never have to do renovations again. We'll never have to repair the roof. We don't have any of those capital costs that we'll have to deal with in the future. Additionally, we will be able to collect property tax on the sold building, um, which we aren't getting right now, for whatever that, again, whatever value it is, I don't know what it's worth. You know, we'd have to look into that, but, um, I, I think this is, if we're ever gonna get out of the business of selling alcohol, this is the best time to do it. There would be no better time.
I will echo Paul's concern, right where the negative side, Paul, of a new manager and finding a good new manager and how much of a nightmare it could turn into if we can't do that. do that. And then, I guess, the other thing I would say is if a dispensary does come to town, that could take away some business. Like, I've read articles that say liquor sales are down because marijuana sales are up, so, something to think about.
I would love to know where people are trading drinking alcohol for smoking or consuming marijuana-based products. Speaking of someone that does not consume what I jokingly refer to as the devil's lettuce or its byproducts, I just, that statement kinda actually caught me off guard and blew my mind.
I've read articles, and I also know some personal experiences. Obviously, I will not name names here, but of people who have decided to, if not quit liquor altogether, definitely have gone down in consumption.
I would be curious to know what percentage of Kathy's, or of our liquor store's sales are coming from the CBD beverages that are sold there.
Sure, I mean, I can give you an idea, just off the top of my head, having reviewed the financials, I'd say year-to-date, probably about five percent. Right now, no, that is a, that is a growth area.
Right.
So, that is probably the only growth area, because I think, colloquially speaking, I've read articles, but I follow the market. I mean, beer sales are flat, declining, certain types of beer are better than others, obviously. Wine sales seem to be pretty flat, too. You know, she's very good about keeping her net margins good, and, you know, I don't disagree with Paul that you wanna sell the business when it's, if you're gonna sell it at all, you wanna sell it when it's profitable, right? 'Cause it generates your greatest return. We did have twenty-two applications, and we did seven interviews over three days, and asking those same questions after, you know, the seventh interview, you're ready to be done with, you know, "What do you think about, you know, liquor and the municipal?" I do think we do have a good candidate. So, I could see both sides of the argument, the council's, you know, council, not argument, discussion we're having, you know, 'cause, yeah, I mean, it can be successful, it can be useful. I think we need to make sure that we're showcasing that, and, you know, that's why, after I thought about it, like, making sure that money's going towards the park system makes a lot of sense to me, because that's gonna be beneficial for our kids, you know. You know, like I said, I also see the, you know, the drawbacks. I think at such a point in time, when I felt like the sales were deteriorating at a point where it made it financially imprudent for us to continue operating the store, I would make that recommendation to council, and I'd have no problem doing that. I'm not sure, I don't think we're at that point right now. However, certainly with a new manager, the next six months would be telling and seeing how it goes for them. And, as I said, I'm open, I see the positives, I can also see the benefits of, I mean, it's one less thing for me to manage.
Right.
Right, so, you know, so I, I would say maybe that's where I would be at, is, let's take a look at the numbers in six months and see how they track. If it looks like it may not be as financially viable going forward, then we can, we can certainly reprise at that time. But that's just my opinion, that's as I've thought about doing all those interviews. I'd like to see, 'cause Kathy has done a very good job about inventory control, making sure her gross profit margins are. She's been very active in the community, and that's something when we talked to the applicants, we said, "Hey, we need you to be," you know, they're on Main Street, we talked about having a vibrant Main Street, we want somebody who's involved, Christmas in Casson, the, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, these things are important to us because we live in this community. It's not just a business standalone by itself, which is what it would become if we did sell it. So, there are some maybe intangible benefits to it, too.
And also, I don't know too many other liquor stores that put that amount of money back into their community, privately owned liquor stores. So, and given the size of it, do you really think that somebody like an Andy's or an Apollo is gonna want to move into that location? I mean, we spent money on renovating the facility to enable it to maximize its profits, and I just, I don't know why we would push to, I mean, I get, I get your point, sell it when it's at its maximum value, but I think, I agree with Tim, that I think we should at least give it six months to see how it goes, and I'm just not sure we would get as much out of the sale of the facility itself as you think we would versus the amount of income that comes, that it generates as a liquor store.
How many employees do we have there?
We have two full-time employees, and I think there's seven, seven part-time employees right now.
I'm assuming a percentage of, a heavy percentage are residents that live in this town.
You know, I don't know the addresses of all of them, I know at least some of them do live in Casson.
We're right on the edge.
We can't guarantee that a company would buy it to sell alcohol in that facility anyway. Then we wouldn't have alcohol sales, and no matter what side of that aisle you want, alcohol's going to be, no matter where it wants to go. People could buy it in Rochester, and Casson, and Byron, and Mayanville, and it's still going to be here. But the purpose of having municipal liquor stores now to provide additional revenue and funds, and it is doing that at a fairly high level. And it has done that consistently over time. Getting rid of that revenue, they support local sports teams, kids' baseball, all kinds of, they support so many different things in the community. It doesn't matter what we're selling, they're supporting and bringing in a revenue. Why would we put all this money into it just to get rid of it? That's my concern. I don't see a point in selling the building right now. I think we can make more money long-term than we would short-term, even though we might make more money short-term selling it and trying to invest it. We are going to make more long-term having that facility, even though maintenance costs will eventually come back again. I feel it's more beneficial to have it. I like Tim's idea of setting aside a specific dollar value or percent so that we can use that to support our parks or whatever area we decide as a council to do, if we do that.
Jim, could I request staff look into how much they think we could sell it for?
Sure, I can certainly try and get evaluation. It may take a little while.
Of course.
I think we'll have to go through that process, but...
I'd be surprised, even if we did choose to sell it, to, that we would, we would still have to hire somebody anyway, 'cause I don't think we'd be able to get through all that by the time Kathy's gone anyway, so. As for hiring somebody else, we need to keep the business operating, so I think we need to move forward with that.
Is there any concern with having this conversation and even continuing to look at selling it, that it will hinder our ability to hire a person that wants to stick around if they feel we're thinking still of selling it?
I don't think so. You know, the, and you have it in your packet there, the gentleman that we're recommending, you know, he has a lot of experience in the industry, and I certainly would be very clear with him and say, you know, he recognizes that's a municipal. He was very excited about the fact that it gives back the community, because in his business before, that was one of the things he highlighted that he liked about, sometimes he worked for Andy's Liquor in Rochester, they did an event, I think for veterans, is that right, Linda? And he really appreciated that aspect of it. I think, you know, it's an incentive, if he's hired, to tell him, you know, there's scrutiny. And we asked him that, you know, "How do you deal with the general public? It's not just your liquor customer, but it's also residents now, 'cause your customers and your residents." He's gonna have some scrutiny. Firstly, I'm gonna be keeping a close eye on him, you know, he's, he doesn't have a lot of capital planning, strategic planning experience, so be working very closely with him, so he's kind of out on his own a little bit more, and not necessarily on the operations of the facility, I don't wanna micromanage him, but on the kind of the bigger picture stuff. And that's one of the bigger picture items, is just to be aware, hey, this, and that was one of the first questions that Linda asked, was the purpose of this, or maybe that was Kathy that asked, was the purpose of this is generate revenue and profit for the, for the city to be turned back. Very cognizant of that. I think, I think it could be very healthy for us to see, you know, how a new manager performs. Like I said, I can see both sides of your discussion points. Getting evaluation, that's certainly something we'll work on. I, that's not a bad idea for any kind of business to have an idea of what is the enterprise value. In essence, you know, we're looking at it as a standalone business you would in the private sector, and that's, so it's something we can certainly find. I'm not tasking in with that one, so that'll be good.
Yeah.
But, no, I appreciate this feedback, and I think it's healthy for us to have that conversation, because, you know, it's just natural time for it to happen.
Would you look at the splitting of the partial parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, I think, having discussed that with you, I think we'd work with the city attorney to probably do a lot split there, because we'd wanna at least preserve, probably the, one of the rows of parking, either the front row off the street or the back row, would have to be preserved for the building, and then the other one would be a separate lot that would just be a city parking lot. Having spent the money on that improvement, we would wanna make sure that's available for folks to use downtown and for the folks that live above some of the apartments downtown too, so. No, I appreciate the feedback, and I'll certainly be, you know, relaying that to the, to the new manager, so they're caught, you know, aware of things.
On that note, too, if you split the parking lot, we're gonna have to, you're gonna have the cost to, you're gonna have to signage for liquor store parking or that building parking and city parking, and then you're gonna have extra patrol to be taking it, 'cause you would wanna make sure you're saving that our property for the residents downtown, not for that store. So, make sure you figure that into your cost.
Well, okay, I don't wanna extend this conversation longer than it has to be, but I do, what I would expect would happen is if the facility was sold, someone will be buying, in essence, the demunicipalization of the business. So, they probably will not keep that building. They will build a new building that's closer to the highway. I would anticipate that what would happen. We might even see more than one location pop-ups. You might have a less controlled environment for it. But, but, yeah, I definitely take what you, you take in, you know, I take what you're saying into account there.
All right. Okay.
My other concern would be if we do sell it to a private enterprise, are we now gonna be stuck with yet one more empty building?
That's possible, yeah.
Small facility.
Things to think about. All right, next attorneys, are any... Nothing? Thank you. Personnel, recommendation for a liquor store manager?
Sure, as I mentioned earlier, we did have those discussions and long, long review. We had those applicants, seven of them. After scoring those and reviewing them, we were recommending Matthew James Olson for the position. He come to, comes to us from private sector, having been a manager at Andy's Liquor in Rochester for many years. The background check came back clear. We're recommending starting at 3,769.
What is the start date, and does he even have overlap with Kathy?
His start date is gonna be next, well, provided it's approved by council, it will be the 27th of October. As I mentioned, you know, Kathy is gonna be in and out quite a bit, but we do hope to have at least two weeks of crossover. Fortunately, the operationability of it, I think, won't be an issue for this gentleman because he has been a manager of a liquor store before. He'll be focusing on learning the point-of-sale operations and how that works with the scheduling of the deliveries and things like that.
I would make the motion to hire Mr. Olson.
I second.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mel. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.